I'll call the Regional School Committee into order and just announce that this is the combined open meeting of Wednesday, September 20th, 2017, which means we all need to call ourselves into session. So, Southborough?
I'm calling the Southborough School Committee.
I call the Northborough School Committee into session.
I call the Northborough-Southborough Superintendent C. Union Number Three into the session.
Okay, we are all in session. The first thing on our agenda for the combined meeting is audience sharing. So, we have a large audience. I don't know how much sharing there is. So, what I would request is if you would like to share anything, could you all come up or could you make a line at the microphone, just so I can kind of gauge what kind of time we're talking about? That's it? Just one person?
No, no.
No? Hold on one second, Mary, sorry. Oh, give us a second over here, okay. I just wanted to get a gauge for her. Okay, so, we have a number of things that are on our agenda that are obviously going to be of interesting discussions. So, all I would ask, because all the things that are on our agenda have been discussed before, there's, we have had meetings where there has been audience sharing, so all I would ask is that you, if you are making the same comments that you made before, you know, just please understand, we've heard them, you know, they're on tape, we've heard what you said before, so if you could just be brief, that would be greatly appreciated. And the actual policy is that each person only gets three minutes. So, given that there's so many people, I'm going to try to make use of that, if that's okay with everybody. Normally, we don't have to do that because we have very few members who are going to audience share, but tonight, I think I'm going to enforce that policy.
Good evening. My name is Mary Hammacher. I'm the chapter leader of the Massachusetts Chapter of Start School Later. This past fall, Concord Carlisle Regional High School moved its start time from 7:30 a.m. to 8:00 a.m. Acton-Boxboro Regional High School just announced that it is moving its start time from 7:23 a.m. to 8:07 a.m., starting in fall 2018. In both cases, the process from first discussion with stakeholders to implementation took less than 24 months. This coming February, it will be four years since my first presentation to the Algonquin PTO on the health and safety problems facing Algonquin because of its early start time. Between early 2014 and about November 2015, we had steady stakeholder engagement, but in 2016, there were only two meetings with the parents driving the school start time issue. The one open issue since early 2016 has been transportation. Parents have brainstormed bus schedules, they've researched transportation consultants, and they've provided all of this information to the superintendent. They've asked for a stakeholder forum to review transportation on several occasions, a process followed by other districts that have successfully moved bell start times, but that request has not been answered. All of the parents, after the parents wrote a letter to the school committees and the superintendent in summer 2017, they were granted an unofficial meeting with representatives of the school committees and the school administration. At this meeting, the school administration offered a 20-minute delay, moving high school start time from 7:20 to 7:40. Since then, one of Algonquin's teachers has been researching that issue. Compared to our peers and the substantial body of science on adolescent sleep needs, a 7:40 start time is inadequate to solve the health and safety issues, and I think that everyone knew that at the time it was proposed. The real solution to the health and safety problems causing by Algonquin's early start times are either comprehensive bell time changes, and by the way, the parents have suggested approximately 8:00, 8:45, and 9:30, or additional buses so that the high school can operate independently from the middle and elementary schools. Each of you has volunteered to be community leaders in the roles that you hold. The decision about how to solve the problem is not easy, but we need you to lead this community through those difficult decisions with courage to achieve meaningful change, knowing that you are keeping the health, safety, and academic success of all of the district's children foremost in mind. Thank you.
My name is Mitch Cohen. I know I've spoken here before. You may remember that name. It's okay if you don't. I live in Northborough. And as you could probably guess, I'm here to speak with some concern about the proposed school calendar that would eliminate the Jewish High Holidays. I want to first say, as I mentioned at the Northborough School Committee meeting a week or so ago, two weeks ago, this is causing enormous anguish on members of the community. Many see it as an anti-Semitic proposal. I'm not going to go that far. Many, including my own family, moved here with the understanding of that was the school calendar and leaving a district that did not honor the Jewish High Holidays. There certainly is a much higher Jewish population in Northborough and Southborough than there was in my former district. And my daughters experienced some problems, some real problems, losing school right at the beginning of the school year. In my discussions with members of the community, I spoke with a woman in town who couldn't be here tonight. She did send a letter to you, so I hope everyone received it. She's a woman who lives, has lived in Northborough for a few decades. She's a retired school superintendent. I believe she was a superintendent in three different districts in the Commonwealth, not this district. Also happens to be Jewish. And she spoke in that letter very kindly and carefully about some of the challenges that she understood as an educator that students, as well as staff members, would face if these holidays were eliminated. I hope you've received that, and I hope that you give that due consideration and weight. I do have a couple of copies with me, if anyone would like hard copies tonight, maybe if you haven't checked your email, anything like that. And the other thing I want to add is that I know there was some question as to, you know, which would be better for education of students as a whole. If you go ahead and look at the U.S. News &amp; World Report listing of the top high schools in Massachusetts, I think it was seven or eight out of the top 10 take the High Holidays, Jewish High Holidays off. So, that shouldn't pose any concern whatsoever. If not, I would say that the schools weighted towards the top also happen to be the schools that take the Jewish High Holidays off. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jordan Chastinay. I'm a student here at Algonquin, and I'm also here to talk about the elimination of the Jewish High Holidays. As a student, not having those or having those days off is a lot easier for me, especially when, actually, this past year, I had a test the day after one of the, one of the High Holiday Services that I had to go to. And I could not study for it because, as I've learned in Hebrew school, you're not allowed to write on during one of these holidays. And for me, if I have school that day and I'm missing it because I'm required to go to services, it's hard for me to make up that work, having to find a day after school that I have to come and be with that teacher and do what I missed, and things like that. And you're just, you fall behind in the class. And I've come back from being sick one day and thinking in math, what are they doing? I don't know what's going on. And having to find a day after school is hard when we're on all these sports teams. And for me, I'm a theater person, so I do a lot of stuff for theater after school, and it's really hard to make all those things up. So, having that, those two days off is really, is really helpful. So, I hope you really take this into consideration. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Catherine Rose. I'm from Southborough. And I am not Jewish, but I have family members who are. And I just, and I've said this before at these meetings, but I think it's really important for us to be respectful of the solemn observances. I think the word "holiday" is a little bit more informal. These are not holidays where people exchange gifts and have men in red suits show up. It's very solemn, and it's very important for that community to be able to have that time and honor their longstanding and respected traditions. So, I'm very much in support of keeping the Jewish observances on the school calendar. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Karen Clark from Southborough. And I have been here at the school committee meeting a few months ago, so I'm not going to repeat myself. Obviously, I feel strongly about keeping the High Jewish Holidays on the calendar or off of the, have those days off from the calendar, mainly for the same reasons that we've, we've been saying. It is a High Holy Day. My kids are going to be taking it off anyway, so they're going to miss those days either way. So, just want to emphasize to, to take that into account. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
My name is Rabbi Rachel Gurivitz. I'm the Rabbi Congregation Benet Shalom. Our building is located in Westborough. We are home to 460 households, and after, Westborough, Northborough, and Southborough represent our largest concentration of members. So, as you might imagine, I've heard from quite a few members over the last month or so about the review of the calendar. I know there are two calendars in front of you, one that speaks of maintaining the status quo and keeping closures on the Jewish High Holidays, and one that was listed on the website as no religious holidays. Just an awareness that how things are received by different members of the community. There are certain religious holidays which are enshrined in federal law, and so they have to be observed as closures. But in fact, it's primarily no minority religious holidays that are contained in the second option. You've heard from some of the members speaking for themselves, people chose to move here because there are closures. It's been in place for a long time. You've heard from a student who talks about the stress that's involved in catching up on work. And sometimes I hear people talk about, "We can get out one or two days earlier in the summer if we take these out of the calendar." And for members of the Jewish community, when we hear that conversation taking place, what it tells us is we're not part of the "we", because we have to catch up and help our kids manage the stress in a different way. These are conversations that you've now heard, I know, over several months from people who have come to speak and others who have written in. But it's also a conversation that I was here having and others of my community were here having just four years ago. And so, one of the questions that I also want to ask is, what's changed? Our community is still the same size as it was four years ago. This is still as important as it was four years ago. And we're living in a time where, in this town, I was just speaking, I've done two sessions at the Northborough Library, where people are coming together to learn and understand more about diversity and faith. And that's happening in a lot of different towns. In Southborough, there's a wonderful organization. In Westborough, that's the culture and the conversation that's taking place. And so, there's a context in which many of my community are involved in building bridges and gaining deeper understanding of what observance looks like and what diversity really means. And in that context, we're finding ourselves here again, having to ask the school committee not to remove something that you've heard is very precious to us. So, I'd like the larger context to be taken into account. And I'd also like to put the same invitation forward as I did four years ago, which is regardless of the decisions made when the committee votes, we would like to be present and connected in a way that we can help people learn about observance, the impact that choices have on members of our community, and help to have a conversation about recognizing the diversity that exists in our towns and amongst our students. And really, understanding that diversity means we don't have to do exactly the same thing for each person, because different faiths observe in different ways. And there are different kinds of stresses that are brought on families who are trying to navigate between their traditions and living in the American secular society. So, the invitation stands to continue the conversation. I thank you for listening to everybody's input, and I hope that you'll vote for the calendar that maintains something that's very precious to members of my community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Adam Winter from Northborough. You've seen me before. You know who I'm related to. We've been here 28 years. I wanted to bring up some other points that I haven't mentioned before, but you have heard some of this. This time of year, what does everyone wish you? Happy holiday, right? As Rabbi Gurivitz just said, Jews refer to Rosh Hashanah and Yom Kippur as a High Holy Days. You can spell it the same way if you want. The difference is to Jews, they are holy days. Judaism is the only religion that requires you to abstain from studying and from working on these days. You can check with her, you can check with any other clergy that you wish, but it's our understanding that the other religious holidays don't require abstinence from work and study. So, just please consider that when you're deciding what you would like to do. And yes, we'd like to keep the Jewish holidays off. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael Bernswag. My wife and I grew up in the local area, actually not too far away in Framingham. And over the last decade, we've set up our household here in Northborough, and we're very attracted to the, the fact that the schools actually, like other communities in the area, did have, have a deep cultural respect for the holidays. And I have to say, I've never been to a meeting prior to these, these last couple of meetings. And what moved me to actually, you know, to, to join this meeting and be part of the process is, you know, I think I was a bit taken aback at the fact that, that this was actually up, up on the, the agenda. And I think a lot of things in life, as we look around the country and look at all the different things happening in our day-to-day lives, you know, it's very easy to sit on the sidelines and, you know, watch as, as things change without becoming actively involved. So, I think, you know, a lot of people, you know, really find that, that it's important to maintain a nice respect for all the different cultures and religions in, in our community. And I think that, as, you know, many people before me have indicated, it's a very important set of, of High Holidays and a couple of days that my children and our family spend together and really enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone. So, what I am going to suggest is that we shuffle the agenda just a little bit and that the, I think, both, the school calendar discussion up to the next item, and then after that, the start time update, which really just pushes the minutes a little bit farther down. And I can't imagine any of you were really upset about that, are you?
Yeah.
So, do I have consensus of all three committees that we
Sure.
readjust the agenda?
Yes.
Okay, then I will say the next item is the 2018-19 school calendar.
There actually is a revised recommended calendar. It was a request of the school committee to me, not only when this discussion took place at our October meeting, but also as this became part of each individual school committee's agenda. And so, what you have before you is actually a white and a pink copy. The white is the proposed calendar for next year. The pink copy is the proposed calendar, actually, for the year after. It's not to necessarily be voted on, but I think it gives a snapshot in terms of what the following year would look like, because that usually comes up in conversation. So, how did this recommended calendar come about? We do spend a lot of time listening on a variety of topics. And listening and the surveys that we created help inform our decisions. And so, at our last meeting, we had a very lengthy conversation about what a very extensive survey process presented in terms of data for us to observe and to, to take a look at within the context of our calendar conversation. And as the rabbi pointed out, so respectfully so, it hasn't been four years. It's been significantly more than four years where we've had this conversation on numerous occasions. I can remember seven years ago and, and eight years ago and back 30 years ago, when this conversation took place here in this very district, when in fact, the High Holy Days were added to the calendar. I think it was almost 25 years ago. And that was a change. They were added along with Good Friday. What the data did demonstrate is that with the parent community and the surveys that we received from the parent community, they, it was split, 50, 51 percent. And that was after surveying the, the parents twice. Once, when the school year was about to end, and then again, at the beginning of the year, to see if attitudes have changed based on the time of the year. And so, that was sort of a validation point. The discussion about whether it's Good Friday or the High Holy Days also brought about some very interesting information that we, as we considered the calendar, put into perspective in terms of the start of the school year. As we know, the teacher's survey results was significantly higher with respect to the High Holy Days at the beginning of the year. But I think when you disaggregate the data, the concern became not so much about the High Holy Days, but in fact, the, the actual schedule itself of weeks in session, five-day weeks in session, which isn't really tied to that. But unfortunately, lots of things are tied to a calendar conversation when you ask for input. And so, what we were able to do, I think, with this recommended calendar was embrace the data that we had, which I think at our last meeting, we suggested that there was no compelling reason for change, given the information that we had in front of us. And also, to take this opportunity to see what we could do to mitigate what really isn't tied to the High Holy Holidays, but is a frustration of educators because of the, the way the days fall. And I think in the recommended, recommended calendar, we've accomplished a couple of things. One, taking a look at what we could do at the beginning of the school year, where folks are getting acclimated, students are getting used to the routines of the year, and then separate that from the religious observance days, so that we're looking at two specifically different issues and trying to sort of address that in one calendar. So, the issues do not become interchanged when they shouldn't be. And that's what you have in front of you. So, the recommendation, based certainly on the listening that has actively taken place over the last year since we've been surveying, and also the results of that survey data, the concern of our stakeholders, the fact that we have revisited this as part of our calendar vote each and every year, as the school committee is charged to do, but haven't explored it as extensively as we have in the last year and a half with the surveys and with the conversations. What we have is the recommended calendar with all of that taken into consideration. If you note, the beginning of the school year, what we've able to do is mitigate some of that frustration by simply removing the professional development days that add to that concern and move them to a month where we know there is no MCAS testing, where we know that the number of days in session, which would be March, would give us a rich experience at the beginning of the March connected to the end of the experience, which means then that those days are removed from the start-stop of the school year, which addresses some of the survey results with respect to the teachers. We've also taken what is a very innovative approach to professional development, and our associations have stated their support. We've spent a lot of time talking with our teachers, and I think we're the first district to, to launch this. Our PD days are incredibly important to us. That's how we get the work done, actually. That's how we address the mandates. That's how we have that one community of learners coming together. And so, those five days are important. However, they were created in the 20th century, and we're in the 21st century. So, we're encouraging our teachers to collaborate and learn together and use that professional time in a hybrid type of format, so that that day, at least for next year, will be a pilot day, and it's not embedded in the student calendar. We've talked, and I'm hoping that it goes so well, and, and the teachers are finding that to be a really innovative approach to delivering professional development, that in the subsequent calendar year, we would be looking at maybe 12 hours of a hybrid. That does have an impact on the student calendar, because it's not embedded in the school year. So, that's what you see in front of you. And if you note and look at the months, albeit, we're going to have parent conferences and curriculum nights, we've sort of flattened out the beginning of the school year. So, we have months where we have multiple weeks in session. And we also have retained what has been part of our school culture and part of our calendar for, I can remember, 25 years. And that is the High Holy Days and, and Good Friday. Good Friday does not appear, obviously, in this calendar for next year, because it's on, it's during April vacation. However, it is so noted in the next year calendar. So, my recommendation to the school committee, taking all of that information into consideration, preserving what has been part of our school culture, and seeing no data to support a compelling reason to change at this point, I would recommend that we, we vote the calendar before you this evening. It is certainly under the purview of the school committee to, to do others otherwise. But we have put a lot of time and energy into this calendar. And I would also respectfully request that because we invested considerable time in gathering data around this issue that comes up every year, that we perhaps consider placing a moratorium on that conversation until such time, like Westborough has just experienced. There is a compelling reason to either look at a change or look at the inclusion of another religious observance day. So, just reflect what I'm referring to. Westborough has just added Dua Lee into their school calendar, and that will be a professional day for teachers. So, we've taken a far, I think, more exciting, I love Westborough, superintendent and I get along quite well, but an innovative approach to PD that really does meet 21st century learning. So, it is our hope, it is my hope as superintendent, that we can put this discussion to rest until such time as we have a compelling reason to do otherwise. And that would be a large group of individuals coming forward to advocate for the inclusion or some other factor that is unknown that would impact our school calendar.
So, it sounds like the request is to approve
Vote the white and think really strongly about the pink for the next year.
So, move.
Can we ask questions?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
We have to have a second to even have a discussion.
Yeah, yeah.
Second for the region.
All right, so moved for the region.
Correct.
By Dan Kalenda.
I'll move for Southborough.
Moved for Southborough by Paul Desmond.
I second for the region.
Seconded by Joan Frank.
Second for Southborough.
For the region, seconded by Roger Tallon for Southborough.
So, move for Northborough.
Moved by Joan from Northborough and seconded by Keith from Northborough.
We need the union or no?
We usually ask for all of them.
All right, somebody from the union.
And we have a quorum, so.
Yeah.
I'll move for the union.
Moved by Patty for the union.
Second.
And seconded by Paul. Okay, now we can have discussion.
Just a quick question. So, I noticed like March 11th and 20th are new PD days. Where were those before? Because I don't have the old in front of me.
The Monday after Thanksgiving weekend and Columbus Day. And we heard loud and, and quite enthusiastically from our parent community that they would prefer they not be there. I think sometimes in education, because of our calendar, which is not the same as most folks, and they have traditionally been where we have moved them from, assuming that, you know, folks would love to have the Monday after Thanksgiving off. But really, the survey said, "No, we've been out enough. We don't have Monday off." And with Columbus Day, the fact is, they don't have Monday off. So, that would be not beneficial to them. They actually would have another day that their children would be out. And so, we listened very carefully. Those tradition, those days have been traditionally placed in that calendar for, I think, before, when I was teaching. So, to move them is somewhat radical move, but it makes good sense for a couple of reasons. The comments were listened to and informed our decision, but it also does address that beginning of the year where it's feeling like there's too much start and stop. And so, then, the discussion around, you know, the High Holy observances becomes not about honoring the faith, but we can't get into our classrooms. And they should be separate, you know, and respectful as separate discussions. So, we're really pleased with March. No MCAS in March next year, so it's a non-testing month.
Wow.
And, you know, typically, we get a call from the town of Southborough, April, they moved.
Oh, oh, that's just me.
So, we typically get a call from the town of Southborough and then Northborough that they have a unplugged day. So, we now have two days that we could suggest, perhaps, that those would be great unplugged days.
Exactly.
We are in professional development, and so, that's a good thing. We are in professional development, and so that's a good thing. We also heard, you know, it isn't about when we end, because we have an absolute concern that we have to be in session in June, simply because the biology test is given. So we don't have a compelling reason to get out earlier, because our kids would not be able to test. So that's not a valid, you know, discussion point, because it's just not accurate. I heard very clearly from all of the science teachers in the district, particularly at the high school, where the biology test is given when most schools should still be in session in order to take the test. I think they have a window up to June 18th, believe it or not. So that's an interesting dilemma as well, which certainly was never something we needed to consider before. And the problem with this state testing, of course, is the dates move, and we don't know until any given year. But what is exciting is, as we look towards the next year, which would be 1920, the calendar flows almost identically, identical to this year, and March is, you can see in March, we've identified those PD days, and it gives us a good opportunity to have sustained discussions within the same month. So I have had extensive conversation with the teachers' associations, and while they do not get to select the days, we don't want them to be completely unhappy with the selection that's made, and I think we'll be fine.
Did I answer a question? Okay. Joe?
I think you just say, I was just wondering if there was a benefit to having them both in the same month, as opposed to one in May and one in March, and kind of spread them out a little bit.
Well, the difficulty is, once you get past April, you're into MCAS. Having them in September, October, and November really doesn't mitigate the concerns. And so that leaves January, and we've never, we've tried not to have a district day in January, because if we have in guest presenters, in all great likelihood, that's when we're going to have snow. And so we've run into significant cancellations and issues with presenters. And so we felt March was a good time. We're not in the testing cycle, and we can do some systemic professional development. And oftentimes, the presenters will present once, give some assignments, if you will, and then come back. So it gives us a good spread. Again, you know, the hybrid learning model for PD is a pilot. We certainly had to reassure the associations of that, and the commitment that we would always have face-to-face professional development. Not everyone should go the way of social media. There's nothing like face-to-face dialogue. And so we've agreed that if they do really like the hybrid model, the maximum we would have using that platform would be 12 hours or two days. So that leaves two professional development days embedded in the calendar, a reduction of one, but really more an exciting way to look at professional development. And I would add that this conversation about professional development would have taken place regardless of whether or not we were taking up other issues with the calendar, because it just makes.
Joan?
I'd just like to commend Christine on doing such a wonderful job of listening to, for over the past year, the audience members, the students that is here tonight. I know last year, I think you came with more than two colors. They were like, we had a multiple colors, and we were going over so many different things. And the thing that stands out that is the difference is that the professional development and the innovative way that you're doing the professional development, because as a former educator, teachers always say, we never have enough time to talk to each other, to collaborate. They have to do their educational plans, they have to take more credits, but sometimes they don't have enough time to share it. Even on last days of school, teachers are still collaborating for what's going to happen in September. So I love this hybrid idea. I think that it was not in the one that we had before. It shows that our district is growing and learns, and it may take some time, but that's okay, because I think we finally make the decision under the guidance of our administration, is that we make one that is, takes care of the students, the community, and also the diversity. I think it's very important that our students learn, especially in today's world, about the differences of each other and how to accept it. When the student was speaking about the writing and how she is unable to write on the High Holy Day, I'm thinking of myself, sometimes I'd have to write notes as I'm studying. So that would prevent that from happening. And even in the most perfect world, if you say not to give assignments, not to give testing, students are missing something that's important, some important aspect, even if it's five minutes of review for a test. So yes, it's taken us a while. I applaud the administration for doing this and also making a best model for our teachers' professional development. So for that reason, I support the calendar for 2018-19 tonight.
Yeah.
So I'd like to echo what Joan stated. Outstanding, Superintendent Johnson, you've listened to the community. I had significant concerns when this was first raised a while ago, and I'm very happy to see where we're ending up today. And I think it's a testament to you in really helping all of us do that level of research, doing the surveys, I think was key on your part, and you leading us through this discussion. I think you've done an outstanding job, and I thank you for that. In particular, I appreciate the community involvement in this. Too often, these meetings take place just right here, when really, all of this is for everyone in the community. And so I loved hearing from members of the community, and in particular, the young student who had the courage to stand up and speak. I am moved by that, and I look forward to voting in the affirmative for this and with the moratorium.
Thank you.
Yes, I also appreciate all the efforts that have gone through and sort of trying to parse out through the noise of, you know, what is the issue at the beginning of the year. And, you know, it's not anything personal against any of the religious groups, but it seems that way. So, and I think to have a moratorium is also, would be also very appreciative. We spend a lot of time on the calendar, and we have a lot of things that we need to do. And I'm not saying the calendar is not an important aspect, but I think the community having some sense of the status quo and something they can count on, unless something changes, of course. But right now, we don't have any, anything that's leading in this any direction. And for us to, you know, anticipate something that's not there, it's kind of, we can spend our time in more productive ways, I think.
Sure.
Yeah, I just want to say, Christine, thank you for working so hard on this, you know. It's been going for a few years, and putting in all the effort that you made on the survey is appreciated, and especially appreciated is the voices of the community, because that's what we have to hear. I mean, people have to come up and they have to speak, or things might happen that you don't want to happen. So I really appreciate it, and I would like to see a moratorium. Of course, any school committee can do anything in the future, and we can't stop that, but I think that the subject is distressing to people, and it'd be best to try to not bring this one up again, if that's possible.
Paul? I agree with all of that. I do commend the community, and I'm ready to vote.
I'll move the question. I just wanted, Joan brought up the policy. With this discussion, we did not have a policy that was consistently applied throughout the district, and particularly at the high school. If a student has seven teachers, which is not uncommon, there could be great variability in terms of expectations, not just around the discussion around the religious observance, but other things as well. So I commend the combined policy group. Tonight, before you, there is a first draft of a policy that will hope to address the concerns that have been coming up every time we've talked about whatever the calendar might look like. We heard from our student tonight that, in fact, that is a concern, and so what we need to find is a way to have equity for all students, so that the experience they have around expectations of doing work or making tests is uniformly applied. So tonight, you'll see a first draft of that policy. The hope is that it's in place by the end of this year. We have enough combined meetings left, I think, to move this through. We can certainly bring it up at each school, separate school committee for discussion, just like we did the school calendar, if it requires that. But I think we've made significant progress listening to our students talk about their experiences in the classroom. And that concern has always come up when we've talked about school calendar and the discussions that we're having tonight. So I think we've addressed that as well and have made some good progress. I would be amiss if I did not thank the teachers' association. I noticed that the Southborough K-8, Dave Finner and Association Presidents in the audience, they have been such a partner with us through all of these conversations for not just the last year and a half, but eight years or 25 years ago. And I thank them again. Their support of the notion of hybrid PD was inspiring, because it is different. It's a risk for our teachers to take, and they're ready to do that. So I want to thank the three teachers' associations as well. And Greg, you know, Central Office is a big group, and we all work together on these issues, and nobody does it alone.
Okay. Let me ask my fellow chairs. Do we want one vote, or do you want to vote as separate committees?
I'd say one vote.
One vote.
Okay. Then the motion on the table is to approve the two years of the school calendar, 2018-19 and 2019-20, as you have before you.
With the moratorium.
Well, that is the moratorium.
Yeah.
It is a moratorium.
Yeah. That's sort of, I guess the moratorium is implied.
And stated.
Now stated and on television. So, all those in favor? All those closed? Any abstentions? Then that passes all four committees in. Thank you very much. Moving on to the start-time update.
Oh, yes, we do have a start-time update. This is really just that, an update. When we talked about this conference again this fall, we met Christina Smith, I keep remembering Carla Smith, not Wilson, and she has been doing nailman's work, continuing to analyze, yes, a very complex issue. We're also lucky to have Matt Wells, who is our finance director, who is in fact from Concord Carlisle, and I'm sure he can enlighten us on the process that Concord Carlisle went through. Just as a matter of note, they have their own private bus system, so their issues are a little bit different than ours. So Christina is here to give us an update. She will be back at the March School Committee Meeting to provide additional information and her findings.
So, good evening, everyone. I'm here tonight, as Superintendent Johnson said, to just provide a brief update on the Start School Later Initiative. So first, I'll provide you with an overview of the topics that I'm researching, and then, second, I will let you know who I've been in contact with so far. And as I'm speaking, if anything comes to mind to you of any topics I may have left off of the list, if you want to jot it down, so you can share it with me, that would be great. So as we all know, delaying the high school start time is a very complicated issue with many layers, and the main layer is transportation. As one piece of our complicated transportation system has been asked, that means that something else and some other effect might happen or an impact on another piece of the district system. With this in mind, I crafted some questions to try to get a bigger picture of the task that I was given, which was challenging, is challenging, and it's to examine the feasibility of a 20-minute later start time with, for the high school, with no cost to the district. In crafting the research questions and topics, I didn't do this in isolation. I reached out to various individuals to ask for their inputs with any, with questions and topic development. So the first big area that I'm looking into is the consolidation of routes, and I'm wondering if minutes can be gained through consolidation. And if minutes are gained, could we then add extra buses to take at other points in the district's routes, to see if that can have some kind of effect on being able to minimize disruption to schools where they shift in the high school start time? Another area I'm looking into is the possible effects of the 7:40 a.m. high school start time on the middle and elementary schools. So what kind of impact would that have? And then linked to that would be looking at the effects of the afternoon dismissal at 2:10. What kind of effect would that have on the middle and elementary schools? And then another area that's come up, that's a bit of a side topic, but it's related to transportation and its cost and efficiency, is the number of parking passes that are issued at the high school, and how that affects the ridership on the buses, and how the district could utilize this information in helping to support the starting school later at the high school. So to date, I've spoken to Superintendent Johnson. Before her retirement, I was able to speak with Cheryl Levesque, who you know is our Director of Business. And recently, I've spent some time with Matt Wells, our Director of Finance and Operations, and he's made himself readily available to answer my questions related to budgeting and bus routes and bus contracts. And as has been mentioned a few times tonight, he has his experience with Concord Carlisle, and just having gone through that experience, and he's been able to share some of that, and he's been a wealth of knowledge. I've been able to speak with representatives from North Reading Transportation, our bus company. I was able to speak with Michelle Brownlee, who's the chapter leader of the Northborough-Southborough Start Schools Later Group, and I share the topics that I'm sharing with you now, and we had a conversation about some additional topics that are subtopics under those topics that I'll be looking at. And for some, I guess what I'd call field work, I've been, I was able to attend a K-8 Northborough Administrator Meeting, where the topic was looking at transportation challenges that they were having this year, and just thinking about those from the elementary and middle-level perspective. And another piece of, I guess, field work was listening to a conversation that was had at the Massachusetts Association of Regional Schools, and their topic was transportation and regulations for transportation. As Superintendent Johnson says, she plans on having me return here with my report in March and to share the findings with you, which I will, of course, be very excited to do. In the meantime, if you or if any member of the public has any area of research or topic that I haven't thought of that you want to add, please reach out to the superintendent's office, and her office can share that with me. And that concludes my brief update for this evening, and I greatly appreciate you having me here this evening, and I also thank you for your continued support of our work here at Algonquin.
Okay. Thank you. Questions? Comments?
Patty? I'd just like to comment that we had two speakers this evening that both mentioned the term "four years." One feeling that it was too long of a time, one feeling that it was very, at least it came through as seeming it was, it was very quick of a time. I did not have a student here at Algonquin four years ago. I wasn't aware that this issue was being brought forward. Of course, I am now. But it is important for everyone to remember that as our districts are all working together, as we have one school calendar, we all share one bus system, it's not just a high school issue. It does affect the K-8s. It does affect the elementary schools. Right now, with the older siblings, if an older sibling needs to watch a younger sibling, there's a lot of dynamics involved, and I just wanted to bring that point forward. Thank you.
Yes, it is very complex, and as such, we will consider it very thoughtfully and not make any rash decisions. Any other questions, comments? Lynn?
I would, I'd just like to, I'm looking forward to hearing the report in March. I think that you're doing a great job in trying to have all the bases covered and tending all the meetings and all this, all this extra, very thorough examination that we just would not be able to do. So I thank you for that. I really appreciate being able to gather all that information. And it is a very complex issue, as Patty said. I mean, the city of Boston is finding that out.
Interesting. I'm reading.
And it's not easy. And each district is different and has different issues and different geography, different, you know, different things going on in terms of, you know, whether it's spread out or more compact or more condensed of an area. And all those things will impact from one community to the next. So the fact that one community is able to do it doesn't necessarily mean it's easy for, or even that the different communities have the same issues to overcome in the same manner. It's not saying that it's impossible, it's just that it's, and I'm looking forward to finding out a way to make it possible, but it's not easy, and it's different for every area.
Yeah.
So I completely agree with Lynn, and not only is it different for every area, it's different for every student. You know, some students are night owls, some students can readily get up in the morning, some students can adjust the time they go to bed at night, some aren't able to do that. Some are not good at time management, and some could benefit from some, you know, input on. on, on their own time management. That'll help them not only in high school, but it will absolutely help them in college and when they, you know, start their careers. So, yeah, it is, it is a complex issue, and it's not just, well, if one community did it well, then it works for everyone. You know, I look forward to hearing the results of all the research that's being done, but I think there's lots that can be done just on, you know, awareness for, for our school kids on their own time management and techniques to help ensure that they're not wasting time when the school day is done, preparing, you know, doing their homework, getting ready for the next day, setting that, you know, setting their own schedule where, hey, I need to go to bed at a certain time every night consistently, and if I can do that, I get the requisite amount of sleep that I need. That's also something that we could do, even if we don't change the start time.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you very much, Christina, and we look so forward to hearing from you in March. I'm going to make another slight adjustment to the agenda only because we have some people in the audience that I think we would like to welcome. So I'm going to move Personnel Update to the next item, if everybody is okay with that.
Sure. So I'm actually going to ask Assistant Superintendent Patnaud to introduce our new guest for the evening. I know, and I think you all know, that Greg has worked very closely with our tech team and has done yeoman's work in his role as Assistant Superintendent and beyond, in the absence or with the absence of our Director of Instructional Technology and Learning. And we've restructured our technology team and the way we deliver services to our schools, not only in terms of hardware and infrastructure and, and software, but also the way that teaching and learning is taking place. So I'm, I think we share the honor, but I think it's yours.
So thank you. It's a great honor and privilege to introduce Julie Doyle, a name that is very familiar to the committee, as the next Director of Instructional Technology and Digital Learning. So Julie, come on up. So Julie, for the past three years, has been the high school's instructional technology specialist and has been a real leader at the high school and in Northborough and Southborough in bringing innovative practices around digital learning to our district. We've been trying to lure her into this position. Finally, we convinced her.
Cracked her.
She has, she has a knowledge of the district. She has the respect of her colleagues in similar positions, and we look forward to great things to come under her leadership. So, welcome, Julie, and we feel very fortunate to have you join the Central Office.
Thank you. Thank you. I just wanted to say how excited I am for this new position and for the opportunity to share my passion for both teaching and technology with not only now the folks at Algonquin, but the, all the schools in the district, all the teachers and the students. So I'm excited for the challenge.
That's great. It was her snapshot, snapshot visits to the school committee that really encouraged her to take that leap, and you know, she's been almost every year, two or three times. So she just said, you know, I really like that, I think.
We take full credit.
Absolutely. Julie actually is transitioning out of her role at Algonquin. We appreciate how much she is needed here and it's such a positive impact. So with the support of Principal Walsh, we have agreed to slowly extract her from Algonquin and move her to the bigger picture, and I think that's working out well. And the date is a time yet uncertain because we're trying to backfill the great work that she's doing here, which is hard to do. And with the launch of Canvas, which Julie really had just significant positive impact on bringing that forward, we don't want to leave the high school without that leadership. So we've posted, and when we have the next right person, fine, but Julie will then be moving over. We're just thrilled.
Welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Oh, and yes, while we're on personnel, they may not be here, but they're with us in spirit. We have replaced Stacy Goldman, who went back to Lexington, where she came to us from over the summer. And we are also quite pleased to have Erica Edstrom, who comes from Worcester Public Schools to fill the position of Assistant Director of Student Support Services. She actually just started this month. We thought we'd save great things to come, and she'll be here probably in March, so you can meet her in person at the next combined meeting. And then Nicole St. Germaine. For the last year and a half, we've had the benefit of some outstanding consultants, one in particular working in our business office, to help move us forward with the, with our financial accounting practices. And rather than just fill the position, we wanted to make sure we had the right person. With Cheryl's retirement, we also wanted to make sure that the new Financial Director of Operations had an opportunity to hire his or her right-hand person. And so both of those things have happened, and Matt was involved in the interview process for our financial accountant and that individual, much to the unhappiness of Westborough Public Schools. We have hired Nicole St. Germaine, and she has been with us now for a month. So we're excited to have her as well.
Welcome to them as well.
We are fully staffed.
Oh, we love that.
We certainly do.
There's always work to do. Okay, finally, action on minutes. I know. Does anybody have any comments, updates, concerns, or typos? All.
On the combined meeting minutes for both September 19th and September 25th, I need to be added to the list of Superintendent's Number Three members.
Well, we left that off, so you can add something. You didn't have any typos.
Just to see if I can. I wouldn't bring it up, except that I motioned on something, so.
Did we have the right motion, though?
I think so.
Did you actually make that motion?
What's that?
Did you actually make the motion? That excited you?
I just, I moved to adjourn or something.
Oh, okay.
For the union. Being there for the union.
Yeah.
Which will also be.
And we can actually release the executive session as well.
So when you say we can release them, which ones are you talking about?
The first batch.
The ones that, okay, they don't say anything, they don't say release or retain.
It's in a separate.
So all of the ones in the first batch can be released?
Can be voted on and released.
Yes.
All right. Anybody else have any comments?
Just one quick, one quick comment on those, one of those, on those meetings, there was no union present. Union was not in session.
For combined?
Yeah, because there was no, there was no quorum for union.
Is that the only group that didn't have a quorum? I thought, I thought two, two groups didn't have a quorum.
September 19th, combined, there was no quorum.
Oh, September 19th? Oh, 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 okay.
No, the 19th and the 25th, there were no, there were no quorums for region.
And what does it say?
Yeah, I don't think there's a quorum for that in October.
In October, we didn't have a region.
No.
Or union.
Or a union. We had quorum for Northborough and Southborough.
Yeah, just, we had quorum for Southborough. I guess the other meetings can vote if they want, but they're not in session.
So the minutes are the same, it's just the vote?
Yeah.
Is that, is that, I'm just trying to understand protocol, so is that correct? If a committee doesn't have a quorum, we still list them at the meeting?
Yeah, you can, because like, you can deliberate, you just can't vote. So you can still hold the meeting.
I understand, I'm talking about the minutes.
Yeah.
So would the minutes still, still list them at the meeting?
At the table.
Oh, yeah.
We were actually, we left them off to the side.
Oh.
Yeah, we weren't part of this.
We couldn't talk, we couldn't.
You couldn't even talk?
If you don't have a quorum.
Oh, okay. Because we've done that.
We mentioned that you, there was no quorum, so we were not in session in the minutes.
So we should probably remove the committee from that heading.
Great.
Why don't we just remove October from the list?
And September 19th?
Remove what?
And you remove September, so we straighten this out.
Yeah.
So we are just.
So it's going to be the 19th that comes out, which is the other one?
Yeah, yeah. So we will just.
October 25th?
Four out of six.
Yeah, you're right.
I get three. Oh, September 7th, sorry. Four out of six. Yeah, four out of six.
So I move for the region that we approve the minutes of the combined executive session of May 17th, the combined open meeting of June 21st, the combined executive session of June 21st, and the combined special open meeting minutes of September 7th.
Second for the region.
Moved by Paul Bucka, seconded by Joan for region.
I make the same motion for Northborough.
Moved by Joan for Northborough.
So move for Southborough.
Moved by Roger for Southborough, seconded for Northborough by Keith.
Second for Southborough.
Seconded by Paul Desmond for Southborough.
We need the union.
Move for the union? Do you need the union?
Oh, no.
No.
Good then.
Why would the, the union?
Yeah, they're here.
All right, let's, I'll move for the union. Moved by Patty for the union and seconded by?
Second.
Paul Desmond. Okay. Any other comments? All those in favor? Any against? Any extensions? That passes to you now, it's late. For those four. Paul.
So I move for the region that we vote to release the following and approve the retained executive session minutes, the combined executive session minutes of June 15th, 2016, Chief Setz, combined executive session minutes of October 26th, 2016, the combined executive session minutes of December 21st, 2016, and the combined executive session minutes of February 15th, 2017.
Second for the region, and I'll make the motion for Northborough.
Okay. Moved by Paul Bucka for region, seconded by Joan for region. Moved by Joan for Northborough, seconded by Keith for Northborough.
I will move for the union.
Moved by Roger for Southborough, seconded by Paul Desmond for Southborough. Moved by the union, moved by Patty for the union, seconded by Paul Desmond for the union.
Good job.
Good job.
Good job, there.
All, any, any comments, questions about these?
No, I was just going to say, thank you for taping tonight. We watch it. We can go that fast because we rewind as fast.
All right. All those in favor? Any opposed? Extentions? That passes to you now, it's late. Okay. Policy development.
Absolutely. The good news is, these are all first reads for tonight, for the moment, so that gives us plenty of opportunity to reflect on the language in the, in the policies we're doing this evening. There are two new policies. I made reference to one of them earlier this evening, and that is in fact some language around the religious observance policy, and I think when it goes back to combined, we might even consider exploring a new name for this particular policy because it's far, it truly is more overarching than just for absences with respect to religious observances. I did ask the policy subcommittee to provide me with the opportunity to bring this to the high school. They're the ones that are really most impacted, and they'll be the ones who most oftentimes refer to this policy when they're assigning work for, to, for our students, whether it's a test or makeup.
This is really for a religious purpose.
You know, an absence. So this is some language that we've crafted. We do appreciate that it's a complex policy, and it's been long in the offing, so taking our time to review this is important, as they all are. And I might propose that we allow people time to read it and either share feedback through my office or through the chair, and then at least take that feedback and then bring it to combined policy. Our goal would be to move this to a second reading possible this year with maybe a vote in June, so it's in position for, for September. It doesn't mean we want to rush through it, we want to be thoughtful and thorough, but that's the long-term goal, so it can be put in place for the next school year.
Yeah, I just, yeah, I would like to, there's a, a number of things that I, as I'm reading it, wanted to clarify the language, so I do want the opportunity for the combined policy committee to get a chance to look at it again, because there's, and other committee members may, be a number of things that, you know, oftentimes, like, just building a policy from scratch, sometimes the wording isn't always consistent from one section to the next, or is not quite wordsmithed out, and, as opposed to working with a existing policy. So I do appreciate the opportunity for the combined to look at it again.
So what would be, in your opinion, the best way to, from a procedural perspective, to proceed with something like this? We want input from every committee member. You all can't, well, maybe can't, but usually don't come to policy subcommittee meetings. So what is the best way, because not, everyone may not necessarily have gone through, like, this whole policy. So what do you think is, as a group, what do you think is the best way for us to sort of collaborate? Patty?
My suggestion would be we bring it to our individual committees. I especially would like to bring these forward at a Northborough School Committee meeting, not for a vote, but to share, because we have a different set of administrators, which I would, which would give our, our members, if it was on our, on our agenda, it, and I'm speaking in regards to the Northborough School Committee, would give Northborough School Committee members an opportunity to hear from our administrators, or the Northborough School administrators. And then it would also allow time for us as a committee to discuss, and then I would respectfully ask the Northborough School Committee members to hold votes until we could hear back from combined. That would, and we would report back. We would consolidate, I could consolidate on behalf of the entire, you know, Northborough School Committee and, and bring our concerns, should there be any, forward to combined.
Okay. Paul?
From the region, I would say, you know, I think, at least for myself, I just wouldn't mind an opportunity to go over these. If I've got questions or concerns, or maybe a verbiage change, I'd make the change into a soft copy, and I would forward it frankly to you. And then you can do with it as you see, because I think you go to those policy meetings, and I do not.
Okay. All right.
That would work for me. Do we need a motion to talk about this before we, we're going much further? You want to, do we need a motion?
Do we need a motion? What are we moving? We're not, we're not moving to accept any of these.
We're not accepting these as first reads?
No, they're all just first reads. It's just literally. Derek?
I would, I would think on this that, like, with, with the Southborough School Committee, that everybody read it and just get back to the people that are on the subcommittee with what you think you'd like to see changed, rather than bring it up twice, because I think if we take it up in Southborough, then it has to be taken up again here, right? And it's just twice as much work. I mean, if, I think it could be just looked at by the Southborough, you know, anybody on the school committee, they can get back to Mia Couture with anything that they want. We can then kind of, you know.
Bring it to policy.
Yeah, and then come to the combined meeting.
All right. Well, three different committees, three different courses of action, and that's absolutely fine. So these are work in progress. You go, you go move forward.
So, one more. So I notice, I haven't looked at all these for sure, but I noticed on something like the head injury and concussions policy, where you, you know, you've got, you know, policy for Southborough, policy for Northborough, because there are some differences, but I guess maybe storing information, for example, but there also are some things that are, that there's no reason that they shouldn't be consistent, but the language is a tiny bit different, and if you don't look at both of them, then you don't pick up the fact that they could easily be made consistent, just looking at one by itself. For Southborough, just looking at Southborough's, and we're not going to pick that up. So I'm not sure how the best way to at least try to produce consistencies that could be So I'm not sure how, the best way to at least try to produce consistencies that could be, could be there, should.
Concussion's sort of a, it's an odd topic.
Okay, and that happens to be the one I looked at. I don't know why. My head hurt.
Differences in the high school, because of athletics.
Right.
But you're right, if there's a consistent theme that could be in all three.
Well, okay, one, one of them says district, the other one doesn't say district. One of them says public schools, one says public school district. I mean, isn't that, just, you know, language consistencies that, they may as well be consistent. It's not, it's not a policy difference, it's just a.
Terminology.
Terminology, consistency. Good word.
Absolutely agree. You can certainly look it up. Yep. Any other questions before we move on? Okay, well, you all have a lot of reading to do. I'm sure you've got nothing else to do this holiday, either.
Can I just add that the Substance Use Prevention Education Policy is state ended?
Okay.
This policy you need to complete this year. Much of the language is taken from the statute, and if it wasn't taken from the statute, we borrowed it from another district who already had their policies. So it's certainly, and a lot of that is prescribed, much like this restraint policy that we had come forward, and Council does review all of these as well for compliance. So I just wanted to add that, that's what I was coming forward.
Any certain redates on any of the new policy timelines that were desired?
We always hope to have these in place by the end of the year, and I think that's still our goal. But certainly we want to make sure we provide for enough conversation and input from everyone. But ideally, if we could have them in place by June, this is a first read, we have a second policy, combined policy meeting before our next March Combined School Committee meeting, and then that would give us some time before June, which would be our last meeting of the year. So time-wise, we could potentially have these voted and in place for the start of the school year.
All right. Asavet Valley Collaborative Quarterly Report.
I'm not sure where we are.
I know, we're down there.
This is something that we move forward every quarter, and it's required in, as our membership dictates in the collaborative, that all of the member schools, the member districts have an opportunity to review the quarterly reports from the Asavet Valley Collaborative. There is an annual report coming your way. It's very topical, but unfortunately, it wasn't completely backed from the, and I just, you know, every time I have an opportunity to talk about the Asavet Collaborative, the amount of membership costs are minimal compared to the benefits that we receive, not only in cooperative and collaborative purchasing, but also in the job alikes, the professional development that's embedded in our membership. And, you know, as a member of the Board of Directors, it's an opportunity to really be able to have some great conversation with my colleagues on a myriad of topics, and we don't have a chance to do that enough. And Greg is an Assistant Superintendent, and Mee Allen is a Director of Student Support Services, also has that same experience. We realize a tremendous transportation benefit by being part of the collaborative, particularly in the area of special education, but we also do collaborative purchasing on another, a variety of other supply items. So it's, it's good work that they do, and last year, we collectively approved their purchasing of the former elementary, Nelms, 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 building on Lord Ave, Lord Street in Marlborough, so they're even closer to us. It was a very risky proposition for the collaborative to invest in the purchase of that building. I was there last Friday for a meeting and could not find the parking space. So they're renting it out, and we have the opportunity to host pretty, pretty amazing professional development experiences for the member districts and every district across the Commonwealth. And so it's revenue-producing, and it was a good, good risk on the part of the collaborative, and we all supported that. So congratulations to you all for being part of that risk-taking. It is definitely providing some revenue to offset the cost of the program.
Any questions about the report? Okay. That is our last agenda item.
Madam Chairperson?
So, Joan?
I just have a question. I know I'm out of order, but there is a legal alert that comes to all of us, and this one, I just received it today, dated December the 12th, and it says the districts are required to implement substance abuse verbal screening for the 2017-2018 school year based on Chapter 21, Section 97. Is that anything that we would have to put into?
It's in the policy.
It is in the policy.
But what I did add, that's sort of a misconception, and it also says that we are mandated to implement when funded, if it is not funded. Across our district, we have had a significant dialogue about the value and merits of that screening test, including our nurse leaders who have in fact been trained already in the implementation of that screening. It's usually done at seven, two grade levels, seven and nine, or eight and 10. And we're ready to launch if and when the funding to support this initiative comes through, and also whether we actually believe that it's important. I will share with you that three years ago, two years ago, we actually had Representative Dykema here to observe how we connect with our students, and she was quite impressed to the point that we were invited to give testimony at the State House. And, and we did. Myself, Lisa Conry from the Guidance Department here, Student Support Services. I keep thinking you went with us, Maria, and I'm not sure you did.
She says no.
Deb Guttermann, who is a Adjustment Counselor here. And we traveled to Boston at the State House and actually showed them how we connect with our students, and that we actually did not support that. So we felt it was one more mandate that was a checkbox, and it was a 10-minute, not even 10-minute prescribed question and answer experience for our students. All of the information was kept confidential, such that even if we knew there was a concern, we could not do anything with the data. So if you're spending a lot of time screening everyone in 7th grade and 10th grade, and you're not allowed to do anything with the data and the information, I'm not quite sure where the value of that is. So we, we have continued to do the great connectivity activities that we engage in, and that's chatting with our students, checking in on a regular basis, making sure that every student has an adult connection in the building. And so we haven't done that, and we haven't received any money to do it.
Well, it did say there that, and this is written from Stephen Finnegan, the lawyer, he said that some of the money is inadequate for districts to implement it, and if they do, for the districts to keep, as we do through our financial reports, listed expenditures in case there would be a need to appropriate, go to the legislative and get appropriation of more money. So he, he also says it's another one of those mandates that is not funded fully. But I just wanted to know if we were doing.
It's in the policy, just in case.
It is.
Okay. The policy, we also covered with the language.
Okay, thank you. Sorry.
There was, we put audience sharing at the beginning, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So we, the Regional School Committee is going to stay in session, but the other committees can make motions.
I'll move the Southborough adjourns.
Move the union adjourns.
Second for Southborough.
Moved by Paul Desmond for Southborough, seconded by Roger for Southborough. Moved by Patty for union, seconded by Mary Beth for union.
I move Northborough to adjourn.
Moved by Joan for Northborough and seconded by Keith. Northborough wants to stay here. Okay. So for those adjourning, all those in favor? That looks pretty unanimous. Thank you very much.